For today?
Yeah!
Yeah, I know, I don't have a flag. But, you know, I see some flags. Oh, right, we representing Mexico, right? Is that Mexico?
Where?
Italy, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. The other way is Mexico, so sorry. Okay, everyone. Good evening, good evening. My name is Charlene Bathelus. And I just want to welcome everyone to tonight's October performances. As Board President, my vision, my continued vision is to promote community engagement, and to unite our board members as team with each of our board members. Contributing to a specific initiative throughout the year. So during the month of January, Board President Vice, excuse me, Board Vice President Stan Neron sponsored the National Mentorship Month. And in February, Board Member Jerry Jacobs sponsored Black History Month. Board Member Maria Carvalho sponsored Women History Month. We support Hispanic Heritage Month, and multicultural lessons, activities, and performances while emphasizing the importance of diversity, and the sharing of cultures within our school community and our Elizabeth community. At this time, please welcome Board Member Isaiah Rivera, who will offer his remarks about Hispanic Heritage Month, and the diversity initiative that we're going to be doing this month. Board Member Isaiah Rivera.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. Let's give a big round of applause to our Board President, Charlene. So my name is Isaiah Rivera, and I'm really honored to be here and really celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It's, we're gonna have, we're gonna have lots of fun today, believe me, we're gonna embrace the various cultures. But did you know that 75% of our students are Hispanic here in Elizabeth? Oh, oh, we didn't know that. And not only that, yeah, yeah, give a round of applause for that, absolutely. And also on top of that, 45% of our staff and employers are also Hispanic. Yeah. And here, we're here to celebrate, we're here to embrace the different cultures, because really, this month, Hispanic Heritage Month, but it's also about diversity, diversity. So raise your hand if you're from Ecuador, or your background's from Ecuador. All right, we have some hands. Colombia. Peru. Puerto Rico. Oh, okay, Honduras. El Salvador. Oh, that's, Nicaragua, Nicaragua. Venezuela. All right, Venezuela. All the cultures, because that's what we have. We have, here in Elizabeth, 93 countries being represented, and six continents. That is just amazing what we have here. Our English Department, our bilingual Department, our ESO Department, they are doing an outstanding job to really help, support, and strengthen our community. In fact, tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting with them to really understand how we can continue to support you, and to support the program, so we can thrive together in this community. So I want you to remember this one word. I want you to repeat after me, okay? Diversity.
Diversity!
You gotta say it louder than that. Diversity!
Diversity!
Okay. If there's one thing I want you to remember out of anything I say today, I want you to remember this. Diversity is one of our greatest assets here in the Elizabeth School District. Remember that. Thank you very much, let's get started, all right? Muchas gracias! So we're gonna be selling Hispanic Heritage Month, did you know, we're also gonna be celebrating Italian heritage as well. Now, I have a confession to make. Una confesión. I love salsa. I love salsa. Me encanta salsa, me fascina el salsa, me deleito la salsa. I just love salsa so much. So much, that I got special permission from our Board President to invite someone very, very special today. His name is Steve Santos, he's here representing NJ Salsa. So I'd like to invite all the high school students that are gonna be performing up here, please give him a round of applause, all the high school students. You could join us up here. If they could join us on stage, the high school students? Now, you're supposed to keep applauding until they get here, all right? And I'm also gonna invite, there we go. Oh, we're going to full show today, we're gonna have a, and I'm also gonna invite Steve Santos to talk very briefly some remarks, and we're gonna get started with some lessons.
My name is Steve Santos from NJ Salsa. Thank you for being here. Thank you to all the students, the teachers, the administrators, the board of ed, thank you for inviting us. And we're gonna celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, cultural appreciation. We want to do three dances. Anybody want to take a guess at the three dances? There's so many beautiful dances and music genres that come from Latino cultures. Do you want to take a guess as the three dances that we're gonna do? Salsa, yes, good. Bachata, yes. Merengue, yes, yes. And I want to call Lou Sarieta to join us. Lou, she works for the school system, and she's also an amazing dancer. You guys ready? Yeah? All right, okay. Let's spread out, let's spread out. Let's make choices. Our three dances are gonna be Merengue, Salsa, and Bachata. We chose them in that order because Merengue tends to be the easiest of the three dances. Salsa, the most challenging of the three dances. And Bachata, I think, the most fun. Okay, so we're gonna do it in that order. And it's really great to see folks from, young people from the Elizabeth Public School System. I was also a student of the Elizabeth Public School System. I went to middle school here, I went to high school here, and then I moved away for college, and then I came back to Elizabeth. And in addition to having classes that we do outside of Elizabeth, we also have a student organization at Kane University. And so we want to celebrate not only the youth, but also Latin culture. Here we go, Merengue first. Give us that first track. Like a mark. A little bit more volume. We're gonna keep our hands above the head, we're gonna keep it on knee. Let's do it to the left, left. To the right. Yeah, circular, to the left. Can we get a little bit more volume? To the right, circle right. Hey, we got some audience participation. Now back. Back. Left turn, here we go. Right turn, here we go. And back. Salsa, I think, is the most challenging of the Latin dances, we're gonna do that next, okay? We're gonna use these three steps, so we're gonna step back with the left. One, step in place. Two, bring it back to the middle on three. Step back with your right foot. Five, step in the middle. Six, bring it back. Seven, so we have that. One, two, three, five, six, seven. Yeah? One, two, three, with the music. Ready? Here we go. So we're taking a break on four. Five, six, seven. Four, basic, four. Left, right. Now with the right. Left, turn, here we go. Very good, well done, well done. Merengue is from what country?
Dominican Republic.
Salsa from?
Cuba.
Cuba, Puerto Rico, by way of New York City, okay? And Bachata is from where?
Dominican Republic.
Bachata, nice and easy, four steps. One, two, three, tap. One, two, three, tap. One, two, three, tap. Give us the music, you guys, here we go. One, two, three, tap. That's Salsa. Roll towards the last two songs. How can you, this is us. Let's give another, let's give another round of applause for Steve Santos and the high school students. So Steve, thank you so much for coming, we're a good friend of mine, I really appreciate everything you do. On behalf of the entire school district, we want to give this to you and NJ Salsa.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Did you enjoy that? Yeah? Did you like that? Good, 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 good. All right, well, for our next performance, we are going to invite Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School Number 29, who will be performing the Mariachi Ensemble in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. Let's give him a round of applause. Also, I want to invite the Principal Maria Labrador, and our Vice Principal, join him. Come forward, see if you can.
It's just gonna take a few seconds for setup.
While the students are getting prepared, I just want to recognize our board members who are here. So I want to recognize Board Member Rosa Marina Ortega, thank you. Board Member Jerry Jacobs. Board Member Stephanie Bustana Concavas. Board Member Eliana Chavez. And Board Member Diane Barbosa, thank you so much for being here. I also want to take a moment to thank all of our administrators who are here as well. Thank you for joining us this evening. And thank you to all of our students and our parents for joining us as well. Thank you.
You guys share together? You guys share. There's a little bit of technical difficulty, so just bear with us one moment. That is not our performance, I promise.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? I'm Maria Labrador, and this is Joya Hill, and we are the proud administrators of Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School Number 29. Today's performance will begin with a Hispanic Heritage poem, read by students Katie Landaverde and Jali Mar Soto, under the direction of their former bilingual education teacher, Dr. Danielle Dorta.
Following them will be a performance by our Einstein Mariachi Band. This band was formed through a grant from the Save the Music Foundation, which helped provide the school funds for various mariachi instruments. Under the direction of Mr. Glennon, Mrs. Defonso, and Ms. Capucha, our students are excited to showcase their hard work studying this new genre. Please enjoy the performance.
In the season of autumn, glow a special month we all should know is Hispanic Heritage. Rich and grand, a tribute to cultures across the land. From September 15th to October's mid, we honor the amazing contributions amid from artists to scholars in every field. The power of heritage forever unsealed. What is this month you may inquire? It's a grand celebration that never tires, of history's woven with courage and skill, from ancestors' dreams, a legacy still.
From Mexico, Cuba, and the lands afar to Puerto Rico, under the same bright star. Dominican Republic and countries more each with folklore and mixed sports. Salsa, merengue, the beats that ring, and don't forget the mariachi streets. But it's not just music or the savory bites, it's the spirit of people like a sky for the kids. The joy and struggles, the journey taken on mosaic of heritage never frisked, seeking. So young and old, let's stand up and say happy Hispanic Heritage. Let's honor the way by learning and sharing, we'll keep alive the vibrant cultures that continue to thrive.
(Singing) De colores, de colores se visten los campos en la primavera. De colores, de colores en los pajaritos que vienen de afuera. De colores, de colores en el arco iris que vemos lucir. Y por eso los grandes amores de muchos colores me gustan a mí. Y por eso los grandes amores de muchos colores me gustan a mí. Did you enjoy that? Yeah, did you like that? Good, 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 good. Alright, well for our next performance, we are going to invite Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School Number 29, who will be performing the mariachi ensemble in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. Let's give him a round of applause. Also want to invite the principal Maria Labrador and our vice principal Joan Hill. Come forward, see if you can.
It's just gonna take a few seconds for setup.
While the students are getting prepared, I just want to recognize our board members who are here. So I want to recognize Board Member Rosa Marina Ortega. Thank you. Board Member Jerry Jacobs. Board Member Stephanie Bustana Concavas. Board Member Eliana Shevres. And Board Member Diane Barbosa. Thank you so much for being here. I also want to take a moment to thank all of our administrators who are here as well. Thank you for joining us this evening. And thank you to all of our students and our parents for joining us as well. Thank you.
There's a little bit of technical difficulty, so just bear with us one moment. That is not our performance, I promise. Good evening, everyone. How are you? I'm Maria Labrador and this is Joya Hill. And we are the proud administrators of Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School Number 29. Today's performance will begin with a Hispanic Heritage poem, read by students Katie Landaverdi and Jali Mar Soto, under the direction of their former bilingual education teacher, Dr. Danielle Dorta.
Following them will be a performance by our Einstein Mariachi Band. This band was formed through a grant from the Save the Music Foundation, which helped provide the school funds for various mariachi instruments. Under the direction of Mr. Glennon, Mrs. Defonso, and Ms. Capucha, our students are excited to showcase their hard work studying this new genre. Please enjoy the performance.
In the season of autumn glow special month, we all should know is Hispanic Heritage. Rich and grand, a tribute to cultures across the land. From September fifteenth to October's mid, we honor the amazing contributions amid from artists, scholars in every field. The power of heritage forever unsealed. What is this month you may inquire? It's a grand celebration that never tires. Of history's woven with courage and skill, from ancestors' dreams a legacy still.
From Mexico, Cuba, and the lands afar to Puerto Rico under the same bright star. Dominican Republic and countries more each with folklore and mixed sports. salsa merengue, the beats that ring, and don't forget the mariachi streets. But it's not just music or the savory bites, it's the spirit of people like a sky for the kids. The joy and struggles, the journey taken on mosaic of heritage never frisked seeking. So young and old, let's stand up and say happy Hispanic Heritage. Let's honor the way by learning and sharing the will of the vibrant cultures that continue to thrive.
Fuerte aplauso, fuerte aplauso, everyone. Alright, so we've, so far we've had some mariachi. Are you ready for the next performance? Yeah, alright, alright, so for our next performance, we are going to invite School Number Seven and also School Number Twenty-Five. Terencey Riley and Sonia Soto-Mayor. Let's give them a round of applause. And also the principal Jenny Liguin. Please join us.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jenny Liguin, the proud principal of Terencey Riley School Number Seven. And we are very excited to be here tonight as well as for you, Hispanic Heritage Month. For our presentation this evening, the students from Terencey Riley School Number Seven and students from Sonia Soto-Mayor School Number Twenty-Five, will present to you a gallery walk of proud Hispanic notable artists, scientists, and authors. So you can enjoy our presentation. Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the history and culture and contributions of Spanish in American society. Throughout the last six years, their influence and achievements have been celebrated dearly. By legal ESO students from Terencey Riley School Number Seven and Sonia Soto-Mayor School Twenty-Five, will be showcasing the undeniable impact of their films in the arts, literature, and science. Please welcome our gallery walk of prestigious artists, authors, and scientists. In the arts, in the arts, in the arts we proudly present Frida Kahlo. A Mexican painter best known for his self-portraits and his style. Her cultural heritage is represented in the vivid colors of her paintings. And her work continues to inspire and motivate all these of today. Diego Rivera is also a Mexican artist mostly known for his mirror. At age three, he showed his talents by drawing on walls of his home. And his parents encouraged him to hone his skill. Fernando Montero Colombian artist and sculptor is best known for his potteries. By representing people and figures in an exaggerated way. Diego Velazquez was an individualistic artist from Spain. He was a realistic and passionate painter depicting historical, cultural, and royal family cultures. Such as last many years. Now introducing the famous literary works of Alba de la Hora. A Cuban-American Diego Velazquez was an individualistic artist from Spain. Diego Velazquez was an individual I love that. A Cuban-American author primarily known for children's literature, which I typically print in both Spanish and English. All-time author of manga, this is one of seven. In Spain, he is known as Esteban Mascherini. Julia Alves is a Dominican immigrant author, edgy girl who writes about the role of social issues in a way that young individuals relate to. Her work has been taken to the physical picture as well as the many years. Gabriel Garcia Marquez is a great Colombian novelist and short story author, recipient of the Nobel Prize in Literature. His epic book, CNI de Soledad, has been translated into forty-six languages, selling over fifty million copies. Finally, presenting our early scientist. Dr. Leila Choa, a Mexican-American engineer, who was the first Hispanic woman to go up in space. She was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom by current President Joe Biden. If you enjoy watching television in color, then it's due to Mexican engineer, Yerma Montezal. He patented a chromoscopic adapter that paint the way for colored TV. Antonia Nuelo from Puerto Rico is the first Hispanic woman to serve the United States Surgeon General. She has received more than fifty honorary degrees and has been a delegate in the National Women's Hall of Fame. Diana Donijov is a Colombian aerospace engineer and the flight director at ASIS Jet Propulsion Laboratory. She is responsible for the robotic design to explore Mars during the past and present life. Please put your hands up together to show our gratitude and admiration of few extraordinary Hispanic individuals that have greatly influenced society as a whole.
Okay babe, okay, let's give them another round of applause. Now for our final performance. Last, we're gonna be inviting School Number Twenty. And this is, they're gonna be giving an Italian heritage celebration called Tarantella. We're also gonna invite Principal Nicole Pumas and Vice Principal Sarah Fase, who will share about that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicole Pumas and this is Sarah Fase-Apreta. And we are proud to serve as the administrators at John Marshall School Number Twenty. I want to thank the Board of Education and Mrs. Hilkemeyer for inviting our children here this evening. Thank you to all of the families here tonight and our team members that are showing your support for our beautiful children. So this evening, Ms. Calabrese's second grade class will be dancing the Tarantella in honor of Italian Heritage Month. Enjoy.
Alright, what a beautiful evening. We've had so much fun today. We've had some dances, we've had some, yeah, I think we had some beautiful children joining the performance and recognizing people. We even asked them to Italian. I think truly, it has been amazing. Would you agree? Yes or no?
Yes.
Alright, great. So that concludes all of our performances for tonight. But we do want to recognize especially, a special group that took place on September eleventh. You see, the school district, they played a role in putting together this first summer report on September eleventh. So over the summer, and a few days before September eleventh, we had some students, we had some volunteers, we had this group together and unveiled the USS Holland submarine. So I'd like to call out the carpenters, I want to call out the painters, the two students and their teachers, to help make this project a success. If they could please come up, give them a round of applause. So when the board members can take a picture. Great, thank you so much. Let's give them another round of applause. Now, I hope you remember what I said earlier. What is one of the biggest assets that we have here in Elizabeth? What's the word? Diversity. Say it again. Diversity. I want you to remember that. That diversity is one of the greatest assets that we have here in Elizabeth School District. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. So to close, we're gonna invite our board president to give us a closer look.
Did you guys enjoy tonight? Did you enjoy this evening? This is our first one for the school year. And I just want to thank Board Member Aziz Verera for bringing some excitement to our Board Recognitions Month. So thank you again, Board Member Aziz, and I hope you all enjoy. I just want to take a few minutes to one, thank, I just want to thank our students from high school for coming and being, they weren't shy, they were there to dance with us. So we appreciate you coming all the way here to dance with us and join the salsa, chaca, marañan. Alright, thank you. I also want to thank our students from School Twenty-Nine. For their asamba, asamba. So for their performance, I truly appreciate you guys coming out and doing it as well. Did you enjoy the gallery walk from School Number Seven to School Twenty-Five? How do you leave this back? How are you feeling back? So thank you for coming out the box and being unique and doing something very different and showcasing all of the Hispanic leaders in your community. So thank you. We also wanna thank school number 20 for their performance. Right, representing Italy, guys. Only ones that came with a flag. Nobody else gave a flag today, but Italy, so shout out to them. Thank you. And again, we wanna thank all the hardworking people here for doing what they did for September 11th. At this time, as I mentioned before, I wanted to thank our parents who made it. I know a lot of times you guys are going to leave, but thank you for coming to support your students. Thank you for coming here. I thank all of the staff members who were able to put this together. I know it takes a lot to do the campaign, to do this, the onstage, offstage, they do our worship. And I thank all of our parents and our students as well. At this time, I want to take the time to bring every school up to take a picture with my board member, Ministry. So at this time, I just have to let the high school students come up. So we can take a picture. No, okay, we'll next. Alright, everybody have school number 29. Oh wait, hold on, hold on. The high school students are coming up. Okay. Thank you. So I sent out some from JBJ. We have students from Jefferson. We have students from church Edison. And I don't know if you saw our handprint. And Elizabeth High School, Edison. What was your question? Is Bo with you? Bo with you? If a board member's can join us, please. So thank you students for coming during our salsa. We hope you enjoy. I might have to still Isaiah, but okay, she haven't turned around. We might have to go bring somebody to do some pom-poms. At this time, I'd like to invite our students from school number 29. I just wanna say how much I love the costumes. And the belt. I noticed the belt. All love the belts. Where are you using them? Alright, at this time, we can have our students in the gallery walk from school number 7 and school number 25. If they could come up. Oh, they don't have their things. They're without the boxes. I mean, I would, I would. Look, is that too much? We'll come back to you. Thank you. We'll come back to school number 7. They're gonna go get their boxes. We're gonna go get the boxes. Alright, at this time, I'm going to come back. I'm gonna go to school number 20. If the students from school number 20 can come up, so we can take a picture with you representing Italy for Italian-American Heritage Month. Alright, and last group. We're gonna invite school number 7 again. School number 7 and 25 for the gallery walk. So we wanted to take pictures with them. So here they go. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
He perdido el balance por tu amor. En tus manos yo caí. Tienes control sobre mí. Tu cuerpo es la cárcel y yo un prisionero.
To everyone who's leaving, thank you so much. Get home safely, God bless.
Jamás quiero salir. Condenado y soy feliz.
Try to keep my balance but I still fall. But how I feel so hard. Riding through your arms where we have. Wrapped inside you baby and it's so warm. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Love's not a curse. Leaves me trapped inside my own heart.
Quiero ser tuyo enterrido pero tengo mi dolor. Promete mi quelo me vas a dejar sin tu amor.
Talk to me, child.
I'll give you my heart girl. She got a promise. Promete mi amor. Promise you'll hold me, no more touch me. Touch me. Love me. Wait less forever.
I see you here. It's just a matter of time. If you fail.
Yeah, man. I should let you hang.
Yo te acorde impadecido del corazón.
Everyone, we're gonna do an ankle flip to celebrate.
Y por tu amor sufriría mil años y por mucho dolor.
Talk to me, baby. It's too much. Try to make calm but my chest keeps pumping. Trust somebody like I'm drowning. No, life comes for you. Oh, baby.
Quiero ser tuyo enterrido pero tengo mi dolor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Again, happy Hispanic anniversary, everyone. Welcome to the boys tonight to the classroom. And enjoy the rest of the evening and God bless.
I'll give you my heart girl. She got a promise. Promete mi amor. Promise you'll hold me, no more touch me. Touch me. Love me. Wait less forever. You need this.
Really?
Two kings. Revolution.
Hey, yo, baby. Talk to me.
Te mohque me ves en el abandono. Que tú eres mi oxígeno y mi calor.